Good evening. Today is July 12, 2018. I am Maureen Bellino, the district clerk for the Putnam Valley Central School District, and I welcome you to the reorganization and business meeting of the Putnam Valley Board of Education. Following the reorganization portion of the meeting on this agenda, the agenda continues on with business meeting items. I ask everyone to please rise and join me with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is to administer the oath of office to our newly-elected trustees. Mr. Cohen and Ms. Parmley will both be sworn in this evening for a three-year term. Mr. Cohen, would you please stand and recite your oath of office, which is from Article 13-1 of the New York State Constitution?
I, Guy Cohen, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. You are officially reelected as a member of the Board of Education. Ms. Parmley, would you please stand and recite your oath of office?
I, Barbara Parmley, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And now you are also officially reelected as a member of the Board of Education. The next order of business is to call for nominations for president of the Putnam Valley Board of Education. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Ms. Janine Ruffo for Board of Education President.
Do we have a second? Ms. Ruffo, would you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do, with honor. Thank you.
Do we have any other further nominations? If not, we can call for a roll vote of this nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Ruffo, you are duly elected the president of the Board of Education. We can switch seats now.
Do I have to read my oath?
Yes, I have it over here.
You have it over there?
Yes.
I'll bring it to you.
Oh, okay. So I don't switch seats till I read it?
Yeah, I guess not.
Right.
I, Janine Ruffo, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. We officially turn the chair over to you, and you will call for nominations for vice president.
Okay. At this time, I would like to ask for nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. And I would like to answer myself and nominate Mr. Joseph Ferraro to the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Second.
Mr. Ferraro, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. So do we even know if the vote is for Mr. Ferraro as well?
Yes.
We have to vote first.
Oh, we have to vote first. So we'll call for a roll vote. All in favor of Mr. Joseph Ferraro as Board of Education Vice President? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Go ahead.
I, Joseph Ferraro, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay. Now, Dr. Wills, we have to make you official as well. And for everybody watching, this is our reorganization meeting, so this is the meeting where we pretty much put everything in place, which you'll see from our agendas quite well.
I think I wanted to say something too to explain.
Oh, we get to the consent agenda.
Did you want to say anything now?
Why don't you take your oath first, young lady?
Okay.
Because you're not official now.
Yes. Exactly.
I, Dr. Francis Wills, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Putnam Valley Central School District effective July 1, 2017, according to the best of my ability.
Now, this, we're not voting, because that's a... But I think we can still clap.
We can clap.
I think I wanted to say something.
Just one second.
Take your time.
For those in the audience, the 2,000 or so people who are watching us, you can see the agenda by going to the Putnam Valley homepage, pvcsd.org. Go down to Board of Education. Go into District and Board of Education, and if you go down here, the agenda will come up. And not only does the agenda come up, there's the agenda for this meeting, the policies come up that we will be voting on later on tonight. So if you go to the homepage, putnamvalleycentralschooldistrict.org, go down to Board of Education, and you'll be able to get the agenda and the policies. And if you go down to the past meetings, you actually get the minutes to this meeting. Thank you very much.
Do we clap for that?
We don't have to clap. It was lovely and well-presented, but I don't think we have to clap. It's good to know. We did a whole hour training today on affirming people, so I think this is going to... On what? Affirming people. Oh, so I'm just going to affirm you all day. And now, because I know it'll be fascinating and interesting, we would like a report by the chairperson on the audit committee to the Board of Education, who is Ms. Barbara Parmley.
Okay, so the last time the audit committee met was June 13. Of the five people on the committee, only Guy Cohen and I were there from the committee, so we didn't have a quorum. Chris Cobb and Barry Gamson from O'Connor-Davies and Agada Shumsky from the district office also were there. The representatives from O'Connor-Davies went over their audit plans for this upcoming external audit, which I believe they're doing right now. They should be ready to report on the audit results in September. I'd like to say that we're again looking for volunteers to serve on the audit committee next year. We only meet three or four times each year to review the work done by our auditors. If you're interested, please send a letter or email of interest to the district office. The committee meetings are open to all, and thanks to Maureen and, I think, Alex Goffman, we will be posting meeting dates and our agendas on the district website, and then you will see also our meeting minutes. It's under the Board of Ed tab. The audit committee is the very first committee under that tab, so if you want to follow along with what we're doing, you can do that there. That's it.
Okay. Okay, so I know it's been three weeks or so since school let out, but I know we've all been busy. Dr. Wills, you do have a superintendent report?
Yes. It's been an incredibly busy week, and a lot of work at the schools, which I'm sure anyone who has been to the schools realizes, as, you know, so much is out in the, unfortunately, in the hallways where we actually have to store things. And while we work, most of the work that you're seeing is connected with our energy performance contract, so you will be seeing solar panels being installed on our roofs. You'll be seeing, still at the elementary school, the geothermal work being done, which is this huge well digger there to ensure that we reach, you know, the amount of depth that we need to. Our facilities director has been everywhere throughout the buildings, orchestrating and knowing, you know, how we have to move forward with a variety of the projects there. We have the library project at the high school. We have the STEM room project at the high school. We have all kinds of lighting work being done at the elementary school windows. It is a very, very busy time. We have school programs running at our middle school. We have the summer program, the extended school year, and we have the E&amp;L program, which had a great week this week. So it has been very, very busy. At the middle school, the major project is the art room, which is in full swing over there. So all of that has been happening. I wanted to talk a little bit, also just about some of the goals we had last year and where we are with that. So I think the board has copies, and I want to make sure that, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to see anything except your copies because of the sunlight in here, so...
You'll still see it.
Yours is up here.
Yeah, it's okay. You can still see it.
You'll be able to see it.
And again, for the community, again, under that button on the homepage, the Board of Ed goals that Dr. Wills is updating are also listed there.
So, you know, just yesterday, our administrators met for our administrative retreat, and one of our tasks was to look at our goals from last year, and we had already been working on it, school by school and the district, working on the goals and being able to display what we had accomplished this year. The meeting also was taken up with talking about the next steps that we want to take, and we came up as, you know, collaboratively as a group, with a statement about what we would like to see for our goals. And what we are looking at is how we can empower students through developing a welcoming environment, through building relationships, so including our relationships that we have with students, and through providing them with the kind of high expectations and challenges that, along with the relationships, will allow them to achieve at the highest level possible. And we have a statement that we've come up with that we're going to be sharing with the board at a board retreat, and that we'll be talking about as, in terms of how do we get there, and that's what we were looking at yesterday. How do we arrive at meeting the goals that we have so that our students are motivated, are eager to do their very best, and to succeed? And again, one of the major areas that we feel and we had as our goal for this year was building relationships. And I have a chart that I will show you a little later, which talks about the research that's been done on how children really, how students really can succeed, when and only really when they are able to build a web of relationships in their lives that allow them to have the confidence, the sense that they are able, that they have that growth mindset, to be able to achieve. And so, you know, for many of our students, they have strong families, strong parent relationships, and that's one of the developmental relationships. But teachers are extremely important, and there are some very modest steps, and that's what we talked about. What are the modest steps that can be taken in the classroom to ensure that students get that sense of personal connection so that they can succeed? So we started the year in September talking about building relationships, and we want to talk about what we've done this year in a variety of areas to do that. So we started with, I don't know, sorry. We started with communications, and we talked about, from each of the school districts, how we had worked on this area. So for the district office, for example, we had a variety of community engagement activities. For example, the listening hours that we help hold. Now, listening hours are opportunities a few times a year before the board meeting for parents to come in informally, have the superintendent there, have the administrators there, and talk about things that are important to them. And we follow up on what we hear. For example, after one of the discussions that we had, we followed up with an introduction of a challenge program in math at our elementary school, and it's been very, very exciting. And you can see in one of our former board meetings, not the last one, but the one before that, where Mick Coleman talked about his program that he's running in the challenge math program, where he's using art and he's using math. And this program really evolved, developed based on conversations with parents who wanted to think a little bit more about that area. We've had facilities planning committees, where we've invited and engaged large numbers of community members in a very exciting project and initiative that's going to take us to the next decade with ideas for how we can improve our district using the fiscal means that we have right now, which means no increase in the tax base based on this facilities program. That's a very important piece. That was the boundary. And with those funds that we are able to, you know, to really develop through our debt service that we're paying now, we'll use those same funds, we hope, to be able to involve the community in a very important project to create the, you know, those kinds of schools that represent relationships. Again, if we're talking about relationships, the facilities that we are looking at will be the facilities that promote relationships, including a health and wellness center, including opportunities to have active classrooms with students meeting in small groups as well as large groups. These, actually, the goal of the district would be reflected in those facilities. So we've had those meetings this year, with a lot of very, very motivated and excited community members. We had a remarkable fundraiser for Puerto Rico this year, where hundreds of our community members came in to help with that, to promote the goodwill, and that transpires when you're involved in something of that nature. So those are just a few. I'm not going to go through everything here, because you can see these for yourself on display on our website. And we had many, at the elementary school, we had many visitations for teacher to teacher. We had, in terms of communication, we have a wonderful newsletter that goes out weekly. We had a number of opportunities for the community to come forth. At the middle school, we have done a lot more with emails to the community, with opportunities for parents to come in and listen and talk to the teachers. At the high school, we have had numerous information sessions for community members, working with teachers, working with parents on developing the IB program and the philosophy, and a number of presentations. So communication, I think, will be enhanced, because we also have been working on this new website, which will be so accessible to our community, to all in our community, both in terms of the languages, in terms of abilities. So, you know, there are both technical and academic ways and social ways that we bring people together. We had, excuse me, sorry. For some reason. We had a great deal of online social media use. At the high school, this is really very exciting, the way Twitter is used, and a number of platforms that are being used. Anonymous Alerts is another platform we use, so that parents, or students, or others who have, see something that is of concern to them can immediately contact us. There are a number of ways. Our newsletters, we've increased the number of newsletters on the budget and pre-budget and during the year. So I won't, as I said, go through everything, but I wanted to just give a few ideas. Student-centered learning environments, the use of the all space, the learning space, the learning lab, the active learning lab at the middle school. We've had new furniture in that room and in other rooms, classrooms, where teachers, again, have the opportunity to move classrooms around. We have a makerspace at the elementary school, which is highly, highly used, and also the makerspace club, which has engaged many, many groups of students after school to do very creative things in that space. That has become one of the most popular clubs in the district, where we had to have two sessions, you know, involving many students. At our, at each of our schools, we have created opportunities for active learning. At the middle school, our lotty classrooms, our classrooms where we've had active learning have been extremely successful. In fact, the seventh grade students who are in those rooms achieved some of the highest scores ever in the seventh grade math state tests this year with this new approach to learning, to active learning. At the high school, numerous opportunities for active learning. We have the new STEM program there, and by the way, that STEM program and the computer program associated with that, the AP, received extremely high scores in a brand-new AP program that we offered this year for those students who were involved. So, and many of those students, some of those students have been involved in the year before. So a number of student-centered programs. Our ruler program that we introduced this year was a program where we're helping students identi, ultimately want to help students identify their emotions and be able to regulate themselves to be effective and successful. This year, we focused on teachers first, and that affects the classroom climate, that affects how students feel about being in that classroom, and again, that is considered in the research one of the most important factors for student success. One of our, I wanted to talk a little bit about one of the most exciting programs that we've had, which is the co-teaching model that was introduced this year, starting with the special ed department. And Ms. Doherty brought in some wonderful consultants to work with our teachers. It's transformed not only student, not only classrooms where they had collaborative teachers, but it's transformed many, many classrooms where these new methods of learning have been introduced. And the new, these new methods have taught us some things and will be part, again, this is not ending this year. This is just, this year going into next year, we'll be talking about the innovative teaching program that Dr. Luft has started this summer, where teachers are going to, again, learn these new techniques for student-centered, and then they're also going to be tied with having classroom furniture that will promote that kind of learning experience. I'm trying to get moving on this, because I know people want to get moving, so I'm trying to. Again, you'll be able to look back at this. We talked about the facilities planning and the work that's being done with that, this working with building administrators this year, also on budget costs and new ways to conserve and reserve funding. That's been a very important component of the work we do. We can't do this work without the fiscal foundation. And the fiscal foundation is about how we use our funds and with the ways that we have found to track the monies and how we utilize the funds to promote educational goals. I think I've hit the major highlights. And I talked about the EPC work, that's the work in our facilities that we're doing now. I talked about the facilities planning, and Dr. Luft has been instrumental in working on that with Mr. Spittle as well, in sharing those programs and in making things happen with regard to our new facilities and the current facilities. So that just gives you an overview, but all of this is available online. You can see the whole display. Are there any questions from the board?
No, but I know, Dr. Wills, you began your administrative retreat, and the board will have our, I'm assuming we're going to use this as a springboard for planning this year's goals.
Yes, this is what we did last year.
Yep.
And we want to move forward, and our next step, the next step we see after building relationships is how do we empower students to be the best they can be, to succeed. We need a rallying cry for that. We find that there are a group, there is always a very motivated group of students who have, you know, what we're using this year as something emblematic about what has been achieved in this area is the science research program. That program is emblematic in a number of ways. First, the relationship between the teacher and the student, maximal in that class with Mr. Zupan being the teacher, and the kind of connections he has with the students. Then you have the success of the students in that program, and how they've seen what it means to go out into the world and to be at the top of the game, and to say, wow, I can do this. Once that happens, the lights turn on and you are sort of launched as a human being. So we have a group of students who have managed that, who've been successful. And each year, we have a group of students like that. What we want to see is how do we expand that group? And we need to do, we feel that we're searching to think deeply about how we expand.
And you're not necessarily saying expand the number of STEM students, but expand those intrinsically motivated, high-achieving students.
Exactly. Not just STEM students, not just, I'm talking about every area. So we want to see students shine in the humanities and in, you know, in all, in the theater, we have students who shine in that, in those areas. Where can we get students to believe? And we have, as I said, we do have this core group of students, they excel in science, they go on to be engineers. But if you have 50 students like that, we have 150 or 120 in a graduating class. And those students do well, they go on, but we would like them to be all joining the group that's really galvanized, excited about learning.
There are structures in place. Like I know, you know, we're going to be talking today about some of our region scores and some of our scores. I think we all would like to see more of our students use mastery. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel to move our students up. We have to use the structures that we have and the relationships that we build and the skill set of our teachers, all the summer work that's being done, all of the staff development that we support, to get our students to use the structures we have to move to that next level.
Yes, and that's what we are seeking to do. How do we maximize what we have in terms of resources that we're using so that people understand what it will take? Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. On August 4, there will be a special program at the Putnam Valley Library, and it's an opportunity for students to learn the game GO, but it's also for anyone in the community, adults, anybody, students, adults, of anyone at all who would like to learn this important game, which was invented in Japan and China, and it's a strategy game with stones on a board. It's really another level of chess. And why am I trying to sell this program? Well, my husband has volunteered to teach, and he is a master at GO. And so I hope that we'll get some of our young people out there, but also some others out there to learn this game if you don't know it.
We also have, coming up at the local library on August 4 in the morning, Melissa, Dr. Caffaro, and I are running a workshop for parents to learn about the early signs of reading and speech and language development and the impact that has on reading. So there'll be some fun activities for children, and then there'll be a workshop for parents, so.
Great, targeting a preschool younger audience?
Preschool, kindergarten, first grade.
Kindergarten, first grade, great.
You know, we've developed a wonderful partnership with our Putnam Valley Library. Our library furniture will be shared, the furniture that we're, you know, we're replacing with the library, so it becomes part of the community. We also have the middle school program that they're hosting there this summer for reading. So there's a lot going on at the library.
And next year, we're running a series of workshops for both parents and students after school, so it should be fun.
The E&amp;L program runs programs out of there, so that's a great thing. We were talking about community relationships, that's a great one. And we are sending out the latest Starbust Roots again. Again, we want to remind people that we are going to be moving into that program this year. And I wanted to mention as well that there is a resolution that we are responding very positively to, which has been presented by Barbara Scutimara, the legislator from Putnam Valley, to increase the age for purchase of tobacco and vaping products. from Putnam Valley, to increase the age for purchase of tobacco and vaping products. And we're very, very much in favor of that resolution. We've had presentations here, we know the seriousness of the addiction to vaping and what that means. So thank you to Barbara for her work in this area.
All right, I'd like to open it up to community, public comments on any of the agenda items. Okay. Ms. Cohen, help me with this. Should we, are we doing consent agenda first?
Consent agenda first, then.
Okay. Okay, so one, I'd like to open up for the consent agenda, and the first consent agenda is for personnel and other appointments. So Ms. Caffaro, can you start us off with number one?
Resolved to approve consent agenda for personnel and other appointments as per items two through 27 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And as Ms. Cohen said, all of the details are on the website. These are most of our, just appointments for activities, monies, officers that are deck, that are required by the state, liaisons, and it is detailed in, on the website. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, moving on to consent agenda other business. Ms. Smith, number one.
Consent agenda other business, okay. Resolved to approve consent agenda other business, items two through 30, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? Same as above, details are on the website. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, moving on to new business. Ms. Farmley, can I ask you to start with number one?
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Ryan Bukey, a middle school instrumental music teacher from the district, effective August 31st, 2018, as per document number 14/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the disposal of district property by offering to sell the items, high school library furniture that has no longer been used by the district to the Putnam Valley Library at a minimum cost of $1 as per policy 6900.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Whereas is desire, excuse me, whereas it is the desire of the participating school districts of the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services, adopting this resolution to bid jointly in those supplies, commodities, materials, and equipment as listed on document number 1619 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting during the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to now open it up for comments from anyone on the public. And if there are none, then I would like to now lose my place. Here we go. I would like to convene an exec.
Can I just, before we?
Oh, yeah, board, good, right.
I don't know, I'm not the public anymore. I'm not quite sure what my place is.
I do usually say anything from the board, I forgot.
Right. I just wanted to say I've been looking over the New York State School Board's convention materials that they've been sending out. Because it's in New York City in October, it's close for me, I'd really like to go both to the opening session and keynote on Thursday, and then all day Friday, October 26th, there's a session, there are one, two, four sessions that I'd really like to attend. So I'm figuring I'm going to go down on the train or whatever, so I just, you know, if anybody else is going or would like to go, I think some of them should be really interesting, and it's close, so. I may not want to drive to Albany, but I'm willing to go to New York.
I think the first year that Joe and I were on the board, it was the last time it was in New York, and we also went. And it was, or one of, there's a lot of very interesting information. There is some, I haven't gotten a chance to look at everything. It goes through Saturday, I believe, so.
Yeah, it does.
I may try to get there over the weekend myself.
Yeah.
Maureen, when do we need to let you know if we're?
I'll check the date tomorrow, I'll ask.
Because we do have to register.
It's October, right?
Yes.
It's October 25th through 27th.
Yes.
Okay. All right, great, Barbara. Anything else from anybody on the board?
Oh, do I have a, did I have a report that I skipped right over you, Dr. Luft?
No.
No? Okay. Okay.
He has nothing to say.
Well, I'm sure he has a lot.
Actually, actually, it was a misunderstanding on the evening.
Okay.
I, I realized that he, he gave the report, David gave his report to the, to the administrators at the retreat, and I don't think he fully understood that tonight, it was another, for some reason, it was a misunderstanding. But as I mentioned, there was a huge amount of work that he's been doing, and I know he's been very, very active every day, every minute, and so he will report on what has been done in August at the August meeting, so.
Perfect. And so now, if there's nothing else from anyone, I would like to resolve to convene an executive session for nine matters of the employment history of 21 particular persons and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and have a wonderful summer, everybody.